It's six o'clock, meeting of the committee of the whole will come to order. All members are here with the exception of Alderman Tenorio who was excused. Oh, persecution, isn't he?
No.
Ah, too excused. Um, first order of business approval of minutes of June 7th.
Must be approved.
Movement second to approve, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item D two, presentation and discussion of options to mitigate persistent structural deficit.
The last time that we talked to her, having the departments put in information regarding the ideas that were left over, there's um, some information that it's still incomplete, so I don't have anything for you tonight. So I'm gonna work with departments to get that complete, um, to present to you in the future. So there's really nothing to discuss under number two at this point.
You can move on to number three, status and information regarding the OpenGov software solution.
So I think you're all familiar with um, our new licensing and permitting software. It's called OpenGov and it's really taken us uh, very far on our virtual City Hall um, journey. Uh, we wanted to take this opportunity to let the council, to show the council um, what it looks like and how we're using it and how it could be used by yourselves and the public. Um, the majority, we waited until now because June 1st, the majority of our license, our public facing items are now in OpenGov. So um, and we've also gone through, like from the clerk's office perspective, we went through our first renewal process and things, so, which was a million times better than last year. Do you agree?
Wasn't a problem for me, but I have several concerns.
Yeah, so, um, so we, the objectives were for people to have an understandable customer experience, no matter which department, they were going to, to look at streamlining their processes, having more collaboration with departments and um, improving reporting and process transparency and a favorite of accepting online and credit card payment.
Yes, thank you.
So. The other person is not here that has a lot of feelings on that, so we've been successful with that. Um, so we implemented, we had uh, core team members from each of our departments who were liaisons to the departments. The majority of these people actually put together our record types. So they were developers in a way, but it's really a kind of a drag and drop um, program. There is logic and things like that and, but once you do it a couple of times, it's, it's fairly easy to do. So this is a list of all the team members that were involved in that. And then as of last week, we have, over eighty workflows are in there, more than fourteen thousand transactions, eight hundred thousand in online payments and then close to ten thousand parking permits, which is pretty significant. We've been using that since November.
November 1st.
Yeah, so that's why there's a little bit more, plus you just have more parking permits than anything else, so. Um, so there's a lot of benefits. We've really received a lot of positive feedback. I think I've only had like two negative things and it was, one of them was a user error type of thing. Um, but and then other was, people just don't like computers, so generally it's a lot of positive. It's reduced processing time and rework. Today, we were able to approve a bartender license in less than four hours. In the past, but that was also with ordinance change. In the past, it would have taken at least three weeks. So, three hours, three weeks, it's kind of impressive. We're able to um, the public's able to see their current status. We can put external and internal comments, so we can communicate with each other on the records instead of sending emails, leaving voice messages, notes and things like that. It can all be in there. Um, people can schedule inspections through there, we can reassign steps. For example, if I need feedback from someone else on a step or I'm reassigning it to Jean or Jenny, it's very easy to do. Uh, we can refer to different departments if we need additional feedback. We can do renewal campaigns, so with the parking permits, they used to just kind of wait for people to come and renew their permits. Now we're sending renewal campaigns out, so it's a proactive type of thing. And we'll be, not that we didn't do proactive things in our other licenses and permits, but it'll be a little bit easier and more um, I guess, using our technology in a better way, so. Then, online payments again, and then you can see uh, kind of a master list of all the licenses, permits, whatever's going on at a, at a location. So we'll get into migrating some of our current things or past things that might take a little bit longer to view all the records, but right now you'll see all of our current active things or recent things that we've taken in.
I'll say with that external um, commenting, I applied uh, for a license and I was just gonna drop off a check and I totally forgot. I applied for the license and I got a note, said just as a reminder, this will be processed once you drop it off. Here's your different payment options. And it was really nice, you, it was literally right there, like when you pulled up the email, the message was right there. You didn't have to click in to log in, the message was right there. So any external notes to folks applying for applications, licenses, I find it hard to believe when they say, if there was a comment in and we can see it, that they didn't know, because it is right there. So it's, it was really slick.
Yeah, people will say it, but we'll know that.
It was validated.
Uh, the next, the next steps be, um, we're gonna be getting rid of the parking stickers and then the printing of overnight parking permissions. So right now, I, I believe the police department, um, people can get permission to park on the streets. They print out a list and give it to the officers and they look through that. This um, we're finalizing OpenGov, working with Civic.
Smart.
Civic Smart, which is the um, ticket software, so that it know, and our helpers, so as it's reading, well, it'll know which ones can, are allowed to park on the street and which ones don't. So that'll save a huge amount of time.
Albers is the license plate reader?
Yeah, automatic license plate reader system.
So the officer doesn't have to enter it in, it'll just show up automatically?
Right, when it reads the plate.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's nice.
Right.
Even alarm goes off?
Yes.
When it's a no, just drive around till your alarm goes off.
We'll just get some, some cop vehicles that can drive themselves and.
Are, is part of that, are permits like quarterly or will not ever gonna be prorated to match? Or is that too much behind the scenes to be able to prorate?
I, I think. Yeah, or per month, I don't, I don't know exactly the cost.
I've had quite a few people ask surprisingly.
If you, if you buy it after the twentieth, you get it for that month plus the following month. So you get it from the twentieth through the thirty-first. But if you buy it on the nineteenth, there's no proration. We don't have it set up that way. I believe it might be a little complicated to do that, because we'd have to write a lot of logic. If it's this day, then you know that.
Then it would equal this and then this would equal this.
So I think we've tried to ma- make it as fair and equitable as possible, but the prorating could be a challenge, but not something that we couldn't look into, so. Um, we're gonna, we're working on migrating historical data, so all the property data, all the letters that people've gotten in the past, if they've gotten orders or notices and things like that, that we currently have in our property files, is that what we call it now?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna, we're working on bringing that over, but I believe there's over eight hundred thousand records, so that's gonna be a little challenging migration.
Are you talking about paper records?
What's that?
Are you talking about paper records?
They're, they're, they were paper at one point. They're PDFs now.
I thought we scanned a lot.
Yes, yes. We still have a lot to scan, but um, the majority of them are in there. Mm-hmm, so we're just working on matching those up and bringing that over. So eventually, you truly will be able to put in an address and see everything that's, well, that we ever had a record for or have a record for there. Um, we're working on more internal workflows, they're changing the security, so we have some processes that um, not everyone needs to see the details and we don't, they don't have the security permissions down to the point where um, we can make those active yet, so we're, we're waiting for that. Hopefully that'll be done in the next six to eight months. Um, we'll be doing more renewal, renewal processes. Um, we're working on an information page to make, use more plain language. A lot of times, well, people will just throw what it says in ordinance on an information page and while that might make sense to us, I don't know if it does, we need to make it a little bit more simple for the public. Um, so we're working on that. And then there's also a way where, if there's a project going on at a location where they maybe need um, something from the planning section, something from the health department, something from code enforcement, something from clerk's office, you can bring it together under a project. So you can look at where it is, I'm guessing like electrical permits too, all that kind of stuff. You can put it under a project, so you could, you can see the progress there. And um, also the last thing is record type projects. So we can set up um, questions for people to answer and through the questions at the end, it can tell them all the things they should apply for. So those are, those are the next steps we don't have. That's the OpenGov 2.0. Um, so this, I just wanted to show you a little bit about um, the public site and then the internal site. Um, and we can certainly meet with any one of you at any point to go more thoroughly in this. I just wanted to do, it's not exactly high level, but it's not in-depth, I guess. So there's, there's a public site and then there's um, internal site. This is the public site, so we have um, on our website, we have a My City Hall page and it has, lists all the licenses and permits and if you click on it, it'll take you to this page. So this is where all of our, our public facing licenses, permit processes are. And I'll send you guys, I'll send you this um, PowerPoint and then the links too, so you can, don't have to type in the long address there. So the first thing people need to do is create an account. Uh, we have information on how to do that. Um, people that utilize online shopping or what, or emails and things like that, it should be relatively easy for them to do that. The most complicated thing is probably making sure you have the right things in the password, I guess. So um, that's what they need to do first. And then, once they have an account, you can click on my account and you can view, view your dashboard. It provides any information on actions required, messages. Uh, Alder McKee was talking about the email that she got. If, if she went into her dashboard, she would have seen that message here too. Um, if there's any documents we have sent, like a letter, electronic letter or a license or something like that, it would be on this page. Any applications in process, payments that they might need to make or pending inspections. So to, so that's your account, but then to apply for a license or permit, you um, can either type in the name. So if you're looking for a street dumpster permit, you could type in dumpster at the top or you can, you would, you could look in these departments and see which one it might be under. The easiest way is to do, to type in the name. And we're trying to use the common names, not so, and the engineering department, not to pick on them, but they would, but I'm going to. The street occupa- they would call it street occupancy application. So when someone comes in here or calls us, they don't ask for a street occupancy application, they ask for a dumpster permit. So we just added that, you know, that information at the beginning, so it's easier for people to find. So, once you find what you, whatever record you want, this is the first page that I was talking about. This is where we're trying to work on putting plain language versus just throwing up the ordinance on the page. Um, so this kind of outlines, departments are working on this right now, but it outlines why it's needed, who needs it, that, any other regulations. So um, this is not only for the, the public, but for a customer service center. They have a lot of people coming in here. They don't always know what type of licenses or permits somebody might need, but this gives them a guideline to help the customer.
Let me see chair. Can I ask, I mean, if we go back a little bit on the parking permits, uh, you know, I understand, I think we have to move forward in reference of technology, but, but the fact that is, uh, the police department really, you know, with the sticker, i- if on the sticker you put a code, would you say would be a lot easier for the officer, the night checker, to go back on the, on, on, on the brain, on the system, to check out a particular vehicles i- if uh, he's got a permit or not? I, I mean, uh, what happened, i- if, if you got two uh, car parking close each others, so the officer have to get out from the uh, from the car to check the license plates, right?
They'd probably have to do that, yes, but they might have to do that.
So to me, I mean, it's more complicated. I think it was, it's more wasting more time, I will say, you know? To me, I think with the sticker, I think it's very effective. I mean, it's been effective for many years, but I guess if it's a better way, you know, which, which I mean, I have no idea, you know? But I, 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 I look at it, the fact that uh, it makes more sense if we have a code, you know, you know, the officer on his computer in a squad car, immediately he could check it and see if that guy is up to date on his permit, you know?
Oh, the sticker.
So, so really, uh, it's something, I mean, I'm not sure what uh, what's better, really. But that's my, one of my questions.
I mean, that could be a complication and I think right now they sometimes have to get out of the vehicle and search for the permits, any, anyways, the stickers, yes. So there is that going on. Majority of the time, I would feel that they would be able to see the, the license plate, but there might be some areas where they're not able to.
Yeah, that's one of my major concerns, you know?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. So then they just click apply online and then you put in your information, um, your contact information and then this is a parking permit, obviously they put in their vehicle information. And then in the case of a parking permit, they don't have to add attachments, but for other licenses and permits, um, for example, the clerk's office, we have people upload their driver's license, so we can do the background checks or their seller's permit, things like that. So they just, can just take a picture and upload from your phone, it's really easy. And then they just confirm and submit. And I just wanted to point out that if they're not ready to submit, if they're missing some information, they can actually save the draft and come back later, which is common in most other things, but it was not common for what we had previously, so.
I have a question Rebecca, if someone goes through and they buy a parking permit on a regular basis, once they fill in all their information, is it gonna stay there?
Yes.
Okay, so you don't have to type it in every time you buy a permit?
Right, so they're, they're typically doing a, a renewal. So with all of our license and permits this year, next year they'll just have to pretty much click renew.
Perfect.
Question, Lisa? Um, Rebecca, I have uh, just a couple of questions. I came in a little late and my apologies for that. One of the biggest gripes I get as an alder is people who visit from out of town and having to sign up to just get permission for overnight parking. Is there any way to add a quick link? Because initially before we did OpenGov, it was my understanding that people could still call into the West Dallas Pedia. I've tried it myself and it's a no bueno. It's, it's automatically, nope, you have to do this, you have to sign up, it's a pain. And um, I understand our constituents' reasons behind that. I wouldn't wanna go through that process to sign up when I'm just visiting out of town for a weekend. Um, is there any way to add a quick link and/or not eliminate having a person behind a desk being able to add that license plate uh, for that visitor who's here?
I believe those positions were eliminated. Not, maybe last, in last year's budget, so I mean that, we'd have to add those back in.
Right.
As far as a link, Tony, I don't remember, we had this discussion, didn't we?
Yeah, so the vendor, OpenGov is pretty adamant that anyone doing business in their application needs an account, because they end up needing to send notifications to the person, you need email address for that, even if it's for somebody out of town that's just getting temporary permissions. I agree with you, it seems like a lot of work to create an account.
It is.
Just to say, can I park for overnight? But right now the vendor's been a little bit inflexible of being able, for somebody to submit a transaction, they don't have any accounts set up, so we can talk to them more about that.
Could we add multiple license plates to a person's account? And say, okay, I have my daughter coming in from Arizona, can I just add that license plate to my account?
Yeah, if you, if you just log in, you can, you can put as many.
As many?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be acceptable to do? We could let them, okay.
But you have, right now you have to pay for each one of them for a permit, right?
No, not for the temporary overnight, yeah, but for the other ones you do.
Okay.
And that wouldn't count against the, somebody calls in?
I think it's by the license plate number, isn't it?
It is.
Okay.
Free per month, yep.
Alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
If a person doesn't have a computer, are, will there be computers available at City Hall?
We have these kiosks right here that they can use. I believe we have one at the health department. There's um, computers at the library and the senior center that people can use.
Okay.
So we do have availability for people.
That's important.
Mm-hmm. So you do get a notification that you successfully um, completed your application and then it'll, it'll tell you you need to pay. You'll get an email for that. Um, and then this has information on the fee payment. People can pay online with their credit card, they can submit a check and put it in our Dropbox. They can pay cash during the times we're open. If they really wanna drop cash in the Dropbox, they can, because it's secure. But if they don't wanna pay the fee, there's other options. They can mail it and.
Is that what we're charged and that's why we're charging the fee?
Right. Yes, there's, there's options, you can either do it one way or the other and that's a more equitable way is to pass it along, because some people's license, um, the amounts are just huge. So to spread that out across everybody, that would be probably not too fair.
And I would add, that's how the Wisconsin DOT does that credit card fee as well, other organizations. We are consistent among other governmental entities in that sense.
Mm-hmm. And if you have a question, as you mentioned before, you can just type in, it comes to us, we'll answer it. Um, you can print your license if you lose it later, you can print it out again. For the parking permits, we're still mailing out the stickers for now, till we get that sorted out.
Do you, do we see a time when we're not doing any physical mailing of anything at all?
I do.
Like a public hearing where we go to find the papers about something?
I don't know if.
No, we're still gonna have to do hours on.
Yeah.
My dog license, the dog needs that metal license.
Yeah, I mean, but for the majority of things, when person, a person's interacting, we can do, we can do it electronically, so. So this just shows you can, if I have all these permits and documents, I can print them at any time. Um, this is what our next steps are. So you will be able to search, the public will be able to search for a record. So they could put in a location, you know, like City Hall, um, seventy-five twenty-five West Greenfield, it will see, you'll see all the records for this location. Or you can, if you know a specific record type number, you could search by that. So there's two ways to search. So here, I'm showing you someone else's, because we don't have this available. We don't have it turned on yet. We wanna make sure that we're not exposing too much information. We have to check fields and things like that to make sure, you know, we're not giving people's database and things like that, so um, this is just showing Burnsville, Minnesota. So you would check, check, uh, select which one you wanted to see. And then this is the location and all the things there and then you click on whatever you wanna know about. It's got the electrical permits, building permits, things like that. Tells you the owner on the left. Um, here's more details about the property, so you have the zoning, um, when it was built, lot area, all this kind of thing. So we have a master address table where all this information comes over for all the properties in the city. Um, and then this is how you would search for a record, um, if you knew something specific.
There's been surveys done, will the surveys be on there?
Um, are those on our property files, the surveys? You're talking about like a.
A last survey of the property lines.
Oh, a plan of survey. That's on the county record, county records happen.
Do we have that?
Are we stealing this from McLeo, from the, from the county thing?
No, this is our stuff. But if we have it in our records, we're not gonna not bring it over? Because it would be too complicated not to bring it.
The only way we would, our record is plan directly from the county to make sure there's a single source of it, you know? So it doesn't conflict.
The city said this and the county said that.
Yeah. Okay, so this is the intern, that was all the public site and what's coming with the public site. This is the internal site. Um, I believe the majority, I, I think I sent a link for you to sign up and many of you have done that. So you can see what we see internally, you can see um, where records, licenses, permits are in the process, our internal comments to each other, that kind of thing. Um, and it looks like this. If we get assigned a task, um, we'll have this on our um, inbox, so we know what we have to do. This is just an example of like a dangerous dog order that was sent to me, so then I open the task and do the part that I need to do. Um, I can, you can search by address, name or record number here. So the internal site lets you do the name too. And then you get a little bit more information in the internal site right now. So we have um, the picture and all the details of the property. We have flags, so you can see the Aldermanic District, the inspection zone for code enforcement. We also, this is a commercial, it's us, but it's a commercial property, so it doesn't have recycling and refuse, but they're recycling and refuse flags too, so it'll tell you which week or day or that kind of thing. And then this is, you can look up by user, so I do a lot, I've done a lot of testing, so I have a lot of things under my name. But if you're looking for a person and what type of licenses or permits they might have, you would put their name in and you could see all of those things. And then you can click in to get more details. This is what a specific record looks like. Um, you have the de- details, attachments. But down in the lower left-hand side is the timeline. So that kind of tells you all the steps that have been completed and depending upon how we have it set up, it will tell you. that have been completed, and depending upon how we have it set up, it will tell you what needs to be done going forward. And there's reports that we can run. Um, you can download them into Excel. Um, there's a lot of different parameters, so if there's something that you're looking for, um, we can write a report for you and have it available for you. Here's the exports. There's also maps. You can look at how many, whatever. So, I picked how many Let Us Help, um, requests we had in the past seven days. So, this is all the locations that we've had a Let Us Help request. So, you could look if you, I don't know what you might be interested in, garbage complaints or whatever. You can, you could look and see how many we've had. Obviously, it's not gonna have like bartenders, 'cause we're, there's not a location associated with that kind of, with a person type license. Um, you can click on the dot, and then you can view the location, and it takes you back to the location record. And then you see this person put in a Let Us Help ticket, and it's been taken care of, 'cause the status is complete. We have analytics too that we can look up. And then I have a glossary for you. Like I said, I'll send it, this to you. And these are links, more information on the product. And that's all I had for that today.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Yeah, more of a comment to remind everybody, this is our third computer system that we've gone through here, and I think that a lot of people would look at that as a failure, that it took us three computer systems to finally get one that is working and is successful. I think of it as just the opposite, that I applaud our staff for recognizing that the first two were bad and, and pulling the plug and moving on to something else, uh, rather than sticking with it and marrying yourself to that. I know we'll get this through, uh, so I'm glad of that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, that internal link will be in the presentation. I'm pretty sure I signed up, but I just wanna-
Yeah.
Check. I know I'm an external user. You guys approved my license.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, closed session. Um, this discussion regarding a fire prevention fee. And for agenda item number four, the committee at the whole may convene in closed session pursuant to the provisions of Wisconsin Statute, Section nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties or the investing of public funds, the committee at the whole may reconvene in open session after completion of the closed session to consider the balance of the agenda.
Okay, we're closed session.
We're moving, we're moving seconded. Alderwoman Grisham?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tenorio?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keen?
Aye.
Alderwoman Roat?
Aye.
Alderwoman Haas?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ranky?
Aye.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sponsky?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.